Gentlemen, seven o'clock and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Hudson for Monday, October 6th, 2014. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Mayor Virchill.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub Rad.
Here.
District Three, McCormick.
Here.
District Four, Weber.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Vanzlo is excused.
At this point in our agenda, we ask for comments or suggestions from the citizens present on any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council?
Do you want to do the awards and stuff first?
Nope, we'll do it this way. Okay, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the agenda on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, Chief Jensen, Citizens Award. Well, I guess we get all three chiefs.
All three chiefs today.
EMS, fire, and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the early morning hours of August 27th, 2014, St. Croix EMS, Hudson Fire and Hudson Police Department were dispatched to a two-vehicle accident on Hagan Street at Hosford, which is right behind the post office. As you're going to see from this video, if we can cue it up. There we go. See if we'll play this. As you can see from this video, when officers arrived on scene, as they come around the corner, they're going to notice this vehicle, one of the vehicles involved, an F-150 pickup truck was fully engulfed. If you take a look in the center there, you're going to see a gentleman who's taking one of the passengers and pulling him away from the fire. That gentleman's name is Conrad Workman. He was the driver of the semi that was hit by this vehicle. Mr. Workman not only got that gentleman out, but the driver out as well, and basically saved the lives of these two gentlemen after he had been hit in this accident. So, we would like to present him with a life-saving award. If Conrad Workman would come forward, please.
We're presenting a life-saving award to Conrad Workman in grateful recognition for outstanding and heroic efforts in saving two lives from a burning vehicle in the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, on August 27th, 2014. Thank you very much.
Introduction of the Miss Hudson Court. Who is going to be handling that tonight? Mike? Mike? Say, Mike?
Can we get the screen working?
Can't get my stuff up.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. We are your 2014 Miss Hudson Court. I am Alex Bordeaux, your Miss Hudson, and we're just going to describe some things that we're looking forward to or our favorite parts of our reign so far. And personally, my favorite part would be getting the opportunity to become so close with these girls I'm on court with. It's been such a great experience to have with them, and then we've also encountered and made many friendships with girls in other courts from other cities, and that's been one of my favorite things. Thank you.
Hi, I am Dani Byrow, a Hudson Princess, and something we're really looking forward to is the Anoka Parade, which is on the 18th and the 25th. We are really lucky, we got into both parades. It's a parade where you transform your float, it's Halloween theme, people come from all over, so we're super excited, we're working really hard on it, so that's something we're looking forward to. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lockbaum, I'm also a Hudson Princess. We've been involved in multiple community activities that we've had a blast with. We've helped out with the Halo for Five K, Halos 5K, with the St. Croix Art Festival that was just down here, and we've also helped out with the Relay for Life that's here in Hudson during candidacy, and we also get to help with that next year when the candidates go through, so we're really looking forward to that and all the other community events that we get to be involved in, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Cody, I'm a Hudson Princess as well. We are looking forward to the Winter Carnival Parade, which happens in January of 2015, and we're very excited for that. We got pretty close to this year's Royal Winter Carnival family, so we're excited to meet the new one, hopefully we'll be going to the coronation also in January, and we just wanted to say thank you for having us and thank you for sponsoring us this year.
Thank you. Thank you for representing the City of Hudson and the area and all the work that you ladies, young ladies, put into this program, so, thanks, thank you. This time, Bill Rubin from St. Croix Economic Development is going to give us a presentation about what's going on with the St. Croix Economic Development. Mr. Rubin.
Good evening, everyone. The royalty failed to mention that the Anoka event is, it's the Halloween, Anoka happens to be the Halloween capital of the world, not just Minnesota, but the world, and so you'd think this is maybe a modern event, it's been going on for like 85 years or so, and I'm sure if they're still listening, they'll have a good time during the parade. It goes on forever. So, good evening, my name is Bill Rubin, with me this evening is the 2014-2015 President of the St. Croix EDC, Scott Wagner, he's in the audience as well. In advance of the meeting, I submitted a few slides, I'm not going to, unless you can, fantastic. He's thinking about it. Well, we're not going to wait for that, but the first one is the logo of St. Croix EDC, we rolled that out about 13 months ago or so, and it just is reflective, I think, of maybe our logo being consistent with the state of Wisconsin and Wisconsin Economic Development We also are working on a mission statement, every good organization happens to have a mission statement, and we've said all along that we're a public-private organization, and we provide some level of collaboration to help expand and diversify the economy of St. Croix County, and how do we do that? We do that through capital investment, as well as the retention, expansion, and recruitment of business and industry. There are a couple of footnotes at the bottom of that, it's in pretty small font. When we say public-private, most, if not, not all, but most of the towns, villages, and cities are members of our organization. St. Croix County upped its game a couple of years ago, and they are the biggest public financial contributor of the organization. And then the private portion, just like a Chamber of Commerce, we sell memberships to banks, utility companies, general contractors, and so on. We do earn a little bit of program income through sponsorship, advertising, and interest and so on. The next slide is what I would say is our tagline, "St. Croix County, a beautiful place to do business." We worked on that a year or so ago and rolled it out, and we've come to find that the county, and we think that this is true for just about any location, provides business and industry with an ideal combination of an attractive setting, it's got the major metro appeal, as well as favorable business conditions. A lot of what we do is centered around collaborative activities, and on that slide, I noted the Regional Business Fund, we had a conversation that started in 2005 with a variety of communities, not only in St. Croix County, but across the other six counties of west-central Wisconsin, that all had the same thing, give or take, its own local revolving loan fund. And Madison, in 2005, said, you know, "Think about putting that all together into a single fund," and that started to occur about mid-2007, and it became operational towards the end of that year, and so we've got a more flexible use of a supplemental loan fund that new and existing businesses can tap into. We're aligned with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, which in mid-2011 replaced the former Department of Commerce. On occasion, we've got a four-page document that comes out, it's the Economic Dashboard, that's also a collaborative effort with the University of Wisconsin College of Business and Industry. Some of you know, and you've been down there, you've walked the halls with us, we do a legislative day in Madison. We also track the community's industrial park sites and available facilities, and much of what we do is really revolving around relationships and networking. I think it's the final slide, some of the other activities we're involved in, we're heavy into marketing and communications, I think all of you are the recipients of our monthly and quarterly newsletter communications, and of course, we're interested in business retention. If the businesses are here, we want to retain them, if they're here, we want to help them expand. On occasion, we're successful in helping recruit new businesses to the area, we're also involved in new business incorporation, so new business startups, and then advocacy. So, advocacy, another example, in addition to going to Madison once a year and enumerating five or six or seven legislative issues, again, knowing that a growing region has a long list of wants and needs. Back in the day, in 1996, 1997, we were out there kind of by ourselves when we told legislators at the state and federal level that this area needs a bridge, and we were out there by ourselves, and it took a while, but that became a reality as well, and so we pounded the drum long and hard on that one. So, that concludes my remarks, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Why am I here? We're not here to ask for anything. My Board of Directors decided a couple of meetings ago that it would be good to get out into the communities that support us, recognizing that on occasion, there is a changeover in councils and village boards and town boards and so on. This group has long supported the EDC, I think really since inception in 1993, 1994, something like that. I see many of you out in the community, YMCA's, restaurants, shopping, and so on, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, otherwise I'll just drop it off here.
Anybody have any questions for Bill? I can say that we're really lucky in St. Croix County to have Bill Rubin as our Director of our Economic Development Corporation. I've been on calls with him over in our neighbors across the way to try and solicit businesses over there, and Bill does an excellent job, and it's not just for Hudson, but it's for the entire county. If it doesn't fit into our industrial park, let's try River Falls, let's try New Richmond, let's try Baldwin. So, he truly is, has the big picture and has done an excellent job for us.
I appreciate those comments.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of September 15th, 2014, and the special meeting minutes of September 30th, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $649,904.45. A detailed description is posted on the city's website and is available in the Clerk's Office on request. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the Police Department, approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period October 7th, 2014 to June 30th, 2016. Additional information is available in the Clerk's Office on request. To approve community event designation for the "Celebrate the Holidays Light Up Night" on November 28th, 2014, the Candlelight Stroll on December 5th, 2014, and the reindeer in the park on December 16th, 2014, and the Hudson Hot Air Fair on February 6th through 8th, 2015. To approve the Hudson High School banned Fun Run 5K race on October 25th, 2014, following the route presented to the Public Safety Committee, beginning and ending at the high school. To approve the appointment of Ken Waschek as an election inspector, as recommended by the Republican Party and Rebecca Nagle by the Democratic Party, through December 31st, 2015, with the additional consideration that they may serve as special registration deputies or special voting deputies as needed for election-related duties at the Christian Community Home or community-based residential facilities after training has been completed. To approve the proposed Eagle Scout project presented by Noah Heading for construction of a walkway at the Kratley Lane Booster Field. To approve applications for six temporary Class B beer licenses to serve beer at Hudson Crusaders Hockey Games at 1820 Hanley Road on October 18th, 2014, November 13th and 14th, 2014, December 5th, 2014, January 16th and 17th, 2015, January 7th and 8th, 2015, and January 13th, 2015, as submitted. To place on file the St. Croix EMS Commission meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2014, and that is all.
Move for approval. Second. Roll call.
Yakub Rad.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Okay, Planning Commission, discussion and possible action of application of a conditional use permit for master sign plan and signs over 135 square feet at Hudson Center LLC. Mr. Darnold.
Evening. On September 25th, the Plan Commission held a public hearing in regards to this application for a conditional use permit. After discussion, and there were no public comment at the public hearing, the committee recommends the approval of the master's sign plan conditional use permit as requested by Hudson Center LLC with the following conditions: three freestanding signs not to exceed 40 feet in height, and 300 square feet in area, the area displayed 301 sides, so it's 300 per side, with no electronic message display allowed. Three freestanding signs to be located north of Badger Drive along the I-94 frontage and west of Gateway Boulevard, provide signage for lots four, six, and seven, and Certified Survey Map, Volume 26, page 6,012, City of Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin. Maximum sign area per business is 60 square feet, with allowance of one sign per business not to exceed 30 square feet, on two separate signs for a period up to three years after erection of the signs. Signage after three years will be subject to a maximum area of 60 square feet to be located in one sign only. Wall signage will be maximum 10% of wall surface area for each individual wall area. The approved plan and deed restrictions shall be recorded at the St. Croix County Register Deeds Office in regard to allowed signage that may be located in lots four, six, and seven, Certified Survey Map, City of Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin. Mr. David Robson from Hudson LLC, Hudson Center LLC is here tonight, really the purpose of the master sign plans, to try to consolidate where you can have a number of signs, there could be potentially of six or seven freestanding signs with this kind of approval, we've consolidated it down to three signs with agreed allowances on the size or square footage allowances per business. Any questions?
Cleans it up pretty nice.
We hope, think so, yes.
I move we approve based on committee recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
I voted no at committee, not over the signs, not over the monuments, the monuments are great, but I don't think that it's necessary to have a business have to take up 30 square feet on two separate signs. That was, I can't remember Dani, if that was your...
Well, my recommendation was restrict the businesses to one sign.
Right.
My concern was, if we didn't set some limit, you could potentially have some square footage of signage on three separate signs, it kind of gets to be the wall drug effect, you know?
Yes.
So, in that regards, the compromise was to limit it to 30 square feet on a maximum of two signs for a period of three years, with the understanding, the purpose they're asking for three signs is that there's potential for 30 businesses in that center, and they want to provide adequate signage for all businesses that locate in there, but they would not have separate signs themselves, other than once on the signs along the frontage.
Yes, and I agree with that part, but I don't, I think if a business like Caribou wants to have their name a little larger for a while, then they can have it on one of the signs at the 60 square feet, instead of 30 and 30 on two separate signs. I don't think they should be on two separate signs, if that's the intent of the future is for them only to be on one sign, then if they need to make Caribou smaller in the future to fit another business, and that's what they do, or any other business that's going in there, but this came up because Caribou wants two signs right now, I feel that it only needs to stay on one monument, that's, just for the reasons Dani is placing, I mean, to have it, the monuments are only so far apart to have Caribou, and then Caribou again, to me, is not necessary, they can be on one sign a little larger for a while, if that's what they are requesting, to have a larger sign. So, I'm not, that's basically it, so...
Questions? Comments?
I think these developers have done a great job with all their properties, not saying that, no one's saying they haven't, but I agree with the proposal that you guys have put forward.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Keep in mind that if it's one restaurant or one store there right now, it could be three or four until these signs are filled up. It could say, it's not just going to be one coffee shop, it could be, the next four stores could have two, their names on two signs for the next three years, or until they get filled up. I think it's rather redundant and unnecessary, I think the signs, if you only put up one monument at a time till they start going, getting filled, fine, or if you want to put up all three at one time, fine, but to start, if we do this with this area, then it gives a precedence for any other store out there along Highway 35 or along 94, or any other to say, "We want two signs too." This doesn't just end with the Hudson area, with Hudson Center. This is for the entire city, if we redo the sign ordinance, it's not just for Hudson Center. So, that means Plaza 94 could have a second sign with the same people on there, as long as it doesn't go above 60 square feet.
Right, that's not correct, it would have, this only applies to the master sign plan approved.
Beyond 60 square feet.
Just sit down.
But is it just going to be for Hudson Center, we're just approving it for Hudson Center?
Only for, this master sign plan is a deed restriction on the Hudson Center property, and only applies to that development.
All right, I understood.
Anybody else would have to come in, if they're eligible even, to have a master sign plan, then we'd go through the same process we have with this applicant.
Okay, so I understood that differently, but my thought process isn't wrong in saying that we could set a precedence for future, if so be it to have...
Well, I mean, the argument may be is that whether some business comes back and says, "Well, come, a business in that center gets two signs, why can't we have two signs?" And the city would have to go through and discuss that issue at the time that concern would be raised, if it ever be raised.
So, I'm just, that's...
But under the current ordinance, each of those companies could have a sign, correct? A freestanding sign?
No, only one per lot, so if you have, there's four lots now, so they can have four signs.
Okay.
But if, say we have a lot that's subdivided.
Yes.
You can add one more additional sign, or two of the lots are subdivided, also you can go from four to six signs. Here we're limiting it to four signs.
Total.
Or three signs, excuse me, three signs.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't give them, have the 60 square foot, I'm saying that it should just stay to one sign, it doesn't have to go on two separate monument signs at 30 feet each, square feet each, that's just my...
Well, isn't it true that in the long term, some of these signs may become obscured by other buildings, or isn't that kind of the...
Not likely, no.
No, not where they're at.
Because they're on the frontage.
Yeah.
The frontage, yeah.
Seems like an incentive to get more businesses in there because they'll have signage, I don't know.
I'm not disputing the signage, I'm not disputing the signage, I'm not disputing the monument signs, I approved that a long time ago through Plan Commission. I'm disputing saying that we don't need one store having two separate signs on two separate monuments, they can have the 60 square foot sign on one monument until that 30 square feet is needed or whatever, they don't need to have it on 30 square feet on two monument signs out of the three, that's what I'm disputing. How many times one single store can advertise, how many different signs can they be on?
I get it, I understand.
It's the statement, not the signs themselves.
Okay, anything else? David, did you want to say anything?
No, one of the old comments that came from the Plan Commission is that when some of the people, Mayor Clark, who said it, that until there's more businesses, it'd probably look better to have signage other than blank signs, so that's what it comes, and it does attract some of these businesses. So far, only one tenant has asked for more than one sign.
So far.
Because they have to pay for them, right?
They have to pay for it, for balance.
Well, there's only three tenants right now, Dave, I mean, there's not...
There's, we've signed four leases.
Okay, but...
Of the four, only one's asking.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dani, you can stay right there. Discussion, possible action request by Michael Leverdy and Northwestern Mutual to initiate the process of vacating discontinuing part of dedicated public street area east of Second Street, Highway 35, south of Cooley Road.
And Mr. Leverdy has purchased four parcels of land and three residences on an area located south of the Dairy Queen and northwest Mutual office. His intent is to raise the buildings and redevelop the property over a period of time. To enhance the development, he's seeking the city's assistance in discontinuance part of Second Street just west of these parcels. That street essentially only serves the four parcels that he's looking to clear. The issue is, is that the City of Hudson, there's two processes, one's initiated by a property owner and one's initiated by the city. I believe the city process is a little less cumbersome, however, there is very specific requirements, so what we'd be looking at, just trying to get the council's approval tonight to initiate the city process, which means we'd have to bring back a resolution to the common council. Second portion of that process is a public hearing notice has to be published three times in the local paper, it has to be a public hearing, and then there has to be a final resolution consideration. This doesn't mean that this process, initiating this process commits the city to actually discontinuing and vacating all or part of that street area, but allows a process to take place in which the public would be involved, and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation also would be involved, and the reason the Department of Transportation would be involved is really a strong likelihood that they would want to retain part of that for future expansion of Second Street, particularly something like a northbound right turn lane to Cooley Road, expanding that and extending it a little bit farther south, so they have very specific interest in this, and it behooves the City of Hudson to work with them, but we could gain economic development and redevelopment of a site that currently has, is not a sightly location. So, we're, Mr. Leverdy has wrote a letter to Mr. Devon Willey, our city administrator, he's asking for the city to initiate this process, and if it's approved tonight, we would have to come, I'd have to develop a legal description for the area potentially, but we'd be working with DOT also to try to determine what areas might be, what their interests would be, so we're just requesting to initiate this particular process tonight, not passing a resolution.
Move for approval based on Plan Commission recommendation.
Second. Discussion.
I think my concern would be, as you expand development in that area, is the possibility of needing a turnoff area for where that's going to occur. How are you going to get the traffic off of 35? Where's the...
Well, the access, I very advise, Mr. Leverdy, the access will remain where it is, there will be no new accesses, I have discussed that issue with the DOT, there's no room for additional access along that frontage.
Absolutely, but I think you may be, we may be looking at some sort of turn area there as well.
Let's not get the cart before the horse either, we'll look at those details as we get into it.
Agreed. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Darnold. Finance Committee, discussion, possible action of a beer license application for Smash Burger Acquisition Minneapolis LLC DBA Smash Burger 1463. This was approved in finance for a liquor license, beer license. Move, excuse me, move, sorry. Oh, yeah, with the contingencies that were, if I can get to it. Be contingent upon successful completion of building and fire inspection, receipt of copy of their... copy of their Wisconsin seller's permit, and receipt of copy of the restaurant license issued by St. Croix County.
I will move for approval with all conditions as specified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Where exactly is this?
The old Verizon building in Pearson, is it Pearson Room?
Pearson, yeah.
Yeah.
By, by Chipotle.
That's right. Or Felix.
Same thing, same building.
Not, okay. Any other discussion there here tonight, if you want to, you guys want to give your spiel again or not? Go ahead.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Rob Holberg, I'm the district manager for Smashburger.
And my name is Mike Punzenberger, I'll be the general manager here at this Hudson location.
We're very excited to be in Hudson. This should be the first Wisconsin location for Smashburger, which we're very excited about. Our chief operating officer is actually from Wisconsin, so this location's going to be very near and dear to his heart. And Mike, as well, is born and raised in Wisconsin, so a lot of, a lot of family ties. So, we're very excited to be expanding into new territory.
Do you want to talk about the Wisconsin burger, rather than the Twin Cities burger?
I would love to, yeah, we're, Greg, who's our chief operating officer, was very, I'll just say, he put it very bluntly, that there will not be a Twin Cities burger on a Wisconsin menu. It's going to be a three cheeseburger, served on a pretzel roll. They're finishing up all the final details as to toppings and everything, but it sounds like it's absolutely fantastic, and we will be featuring cheese curds as well on the menu. So, a little bit different than, than our Minnesota locations.
Well, I like the rosemary fries, though.
Well, those will be staying, don't worry about that.
Any questions for these gentlemen? Thank you, and welcome to Hudson.
Thank you very much for having us.
Any other discussions, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion and possible action and renewal of a contract for assessment services by Boomer Appraisals. Denny, you want to walk through this again? It was, again, it was approved in finance?
Yeah, in two thousand twelve, in consideration of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budgets, the City of Hudson approved an assessment services contract to Boomer Appraisal for the years two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, with an option year to pick up a contract if it was favorable to the City of Hudson, and the city was pleased with Boomer Services. That contract in two thousand fourteen, this year, was thirty-four thousand nine hundred, and the contract for two thousand fifteen would be thirty-five thousand three hundred or four hundred dollar increase, or one point one five percent increase. The City of Hudson, as we've been very staffed, has been very pleased in working with Boomer. We highly recommend that the approval of the option extend the city assessor services contract for Boomer Appraisal for the period of January first, two thousand fifteen, December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen, with the contract amount to be three thousand, thirty-five thousand three hundred dollars. Again, in two thousand fourteen, there was substantial reporting requirements for cities that the Department of Revenue now requires, that Boomer's been very good about accomplishing and meeting those requirements, so we think that they've done a very good job, and are well deserving of a contract extension.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Purchase, possible action or request on St. Croix County City for the city to agree to purchase new voting equipment. I think most of you were here for that discussion, and basically what it says is that we're, we will put twenty thousand seven hundred dollars into our budget, not including additional supplies, to purchase new equipment, if St. Croix County decides they want to do that. We'll go with this equipment next year. Again, it doesn't, if something else happens, or they get a different piece of equipment, it's got to come back to us, and we'll have to talk about it. This is required by state statute that the city or the municipality has to pay for their own voting machines, and St. Croix County's trying to standardize the equipment for all the precincts.
Finance recommended that if it was over the twenty, because we don't know for sure what equipment, if it was over that twenty thousand seven hundred dollar amount, we would bring it back to you, so that...
Move for approval based on finance recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. We really don't have any choice, folks, so. That is probably, our machines are getting older and...
Old.
Yep. So. It's kind of one of those things that you're kind of not sure about when they tell us you have to do this. Okay, enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion, possible action on passport parking. I think last time we had an extensive conversation on it. Mr. Vanslo isn't here tonight, but I think all of the changes that he requested are here, and the city is paying nothing. I don't believe we have any charges at all in here. So, basically, this is the opportunity for us to take a look at passport parking for the entire city and see how it works.
It's a great deal.
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, now, discussion.
I was waiting for that one.
Discussion. Anybody thoughts on this?
I'm excited.
I think it's going to...
If it passes, I'm really excited.
Okay.
So.
If anybody doesn't, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to consider cancellation of the beer license for Barley's Pizza and Pasta LLC. Think Catherine, do you want to just?
The situation is this, the council voted to renew the license subject to payment of outstanding debts. That's the, one of the standard conditions on any license. The debt has not been paid, and it's now been more than, so the license wasn't actually issued to the licensee, they haven't been able to have a liquor license. It's now been ninety-plus days without exercising the privileges of having a liquor license. So, two, there's two bases now for canceling the council's previous renewal, non-payment of debt, and not exercising the privileges within ninety days. So, the procedure is that you make a motion to proceed with cancellation if you decide to do that for those two reasons, and it will be, the clerk will notify the licensee that the council intends to cancel the license for those two reasons, and it will be on the next agenda. The licensee is, you're required to give him an opportunity for a hearing, and so at the next council meeting, if he, the licensee comes, and he has an opportunity to present whatever he wants to about the proposed cancellation.
Has there been any communication with them at all, or...
Just on our part, we've contacted them a number of times, but haven't, they haven't responded.
Are they still in business, or...
I believe they're still operating as a restaurant.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Notifying them.
Motify them.
Proceed with the cancellation procedure.
Yeah, I'll second.
It's good discussion.
I thought I nailed it, I don't know.
On those two grounds.
I just said I moved to do what Catherine says in finance.
But it wasn't bad, John, it wasn't bad.
Now, just to be clear, that they have an opportunity to come and be heard, and perhaps even settle their debt prior to...
Yes.
Yes.
That would terminate this cancellation.
Correct. Yeah, you're not canceling it now, you will take that...
Process of...
On the next agenda, you're just giving the, at this point, the council gives notice through the city clerk that it will be on the next agenda, and these are the reasons why it's maybe canceled.
Good.
Okay. Everybody got that? We have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven A, discussion, possible action on stormwater easement with the school district, Hudson School District property located at thirteen, or ten thirty, Fifth Street. And basically, we have a recommendation from Public Works that we proceed with this, that all, all costs are, are absorbed by the school district. I think it was five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was basically that, this is being, I thought, when we first brought it to council, I thought it was because, I misunderstood and thought that it was Tom who brought it, but it was brought forth to us by the school district, so this is something where our men will do the work to remove it, but we are asking for reimbursement of the five hundred dollars.
We have another one located at St. Croix and Seventh.
Yeah.
Very nice, so this will be a nice addition. I think it's a, it's a good project.
Is there a new easement document? Because the last one needed revisions.
There was supposed to be, Tom.
I haven't seen a new one.
We haven't...
It, I don't think it's been redone.
Oh, okay, so we'll just go back to where we were and revise it.
Comments or questions about this? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, possible action on Resolution twelve dash fourteen, authorizing housing project for Hudson Housing Authority of the City of Hudson. And I think you have that resolution, Mr. Darnold?
Yeah, Resolution twelve dash fourteen is, I believe, revised on Friday to, Kathy's had an opportunity to review that. The opportunity for tax exempt financing through the Wisconsin Health and Educational Authority, WHEFA is their acronym, is something that's relatively new, and when this was brought to me, I thought they had submitted the wrong acronym, because typically we go through WEDA, which is, you know, Economic Development Authority in Wisconsin. Today, the Housing Authority approved their resolution, support of financing. Kathy's had an opportunity to look at the revised resolution. I, I recommend approval. Mr. John Merkins and Pam Bells are here tonight to answer any questions in regards to what this, there's no financial obligation, City of Hudson, for supporting this particular project, tax exempt financing, so I, I'd hope that the common council would welcome the opportunity, as it will provide opportunities for persons for affordable housing.
Okay.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call?
Yakub Brad?
Yes.
Hoggard?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Orset?
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion and comments, questions on the draft proposal for engineering agreement between the City of Hudson and engineering firms.
You should have all received the email on Friday. Kathy's reviewed it, I reviewed it, Denny's reviewed it. We just wanted to get it out there for you to have an opportunity to look at it, and then we'll put it on the next agenda for final action, but if you have any questions in the interim, contact Denny or I, and then we'll, either we'll try to answer them, or we'll forward them on to Catherine.
Okay. Questions? All right, we'll move on to item nine. I'd like to note and thank, or at least note the passing of Peter Post. Peter Post served on the Hudson City Council for at least four years, possibly longer, also was on the Plan Commission, and then most recently was serving on Board of Review, I think.
Police and Fire.
Board of Appeals.
And Police and Fire.
Board of Appeals, and was on the Police and Fire Commission, so, so lost to our community, a good, a good servant for our city, so our sympathies to Peter's family. We also have National Hospice Care Month proclamation, and I guess I'll read that at this time, for the month of November. Whereas hospice and palliative care power people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illnesses, whereas hospice and palliative care bring patients and family givers together the highest quality care delivered by interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselor, health aides, spiritual care providers, and others, and who make, make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. Whereas through pain management, symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully until their final moments, surrounded and supported by the face of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas each year hospice saves Medicare more than two billion by providing solutions for physicians, physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families anywhere at any time. Whereas every year, more than one point six five million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. Whereas more than four hundred and fifty thousand trained volunteers contribute twenty-one million hours of service to the hospice program annually. Whereas hospice and the care providers encourage all people to learn more about other options, care options, to share their wishes of family and loved ones and their healthcare professionals. Now, therefore, it resolved, I, Alan Virchell, mayor of the City of Hudson, by virtue of authority vested me to hereby proclaim November twenty-fourth as National Hospice Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase the understanding and awareness and care of end of life, and observe this month with priority appropriate activities and programs. So, that's the resolution that, that I've given and read. And anybody that's had to use hospice, you'll know what a great organization that is.
Yes.
Okay. Any other communication, future agenda items, council members? City Administrator?
Just a couple of things. The agenda's worked okay for everybody doing it this way, you're able to open everything.
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, good, just wanted to chat. We do need to have, schedule a special meeting, hopefully on the twenty-first. We had a liquor license application came in today, but has to be on file fifteen days, so they are requesting potentially a meeting on the twenty-first of October. It'll be the day after the council meeting, it'd be a two-minute meeting. So, if you could get back to me by email or phone or whatever, let me know your availability on the twenty-first.
What time?
It doesn't matter. It could be, it could be in the morning, could be in the afternoon.
It can't be done the twentieth, because it's day fourteen.
Right.
Correct.
By how many hours?
You want to stay here till midnight?
I don't...
No, it's...
We've done it before.
Okay.
So, if you could just let me, let me know when, on the twentieth?
Twenty-first.
Sorry, twenty-first. Either morning, late afternoon, early evening, like I said, it'll take about two minutes and...
Shouldn't take very long.
Yeah. All right.